Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the regularly-scheduled October 22 meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Reverend Willie Barnes, who has served the congregation of the International Church of Faith for 12 years. The church is located in our Paramore neighborhood in District 5 and has been there for six years. The church is active in the community with many outreach programs primarily benefiting youth and the needy. After the invocation, we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by District 1 Commissioner Jim Gray. Would you please join me in standing?
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this time, for this moment, and as we stand before your presence, we ask that your blessing upon this place today, that everything will go decent and in order. We invoke your presence in here today. Dear God, we pray for our mayor and his family. We pray that you will continue to provide for him, Lord, that he would do the job which need to be done in this great city. We pray for our commissioners, our police, and everyone else that's a part of this wonderful city of Orlando. We pray to your continued blessing upon this city. May we continue to rise to the occasion. And may this city rise on top in everything that we do, as we recall the city beautiful. Lord, we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, make a determination of a quorum?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lyman.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Madam Clerk, where did you retrieve the flag from?
It just appeared, Mayor.
It just reappeared. If we looked confused up here, it wasn't because Commissioner Gray was leading the pledge for the first time and turned the wrong way. It's because our flag down in the corner had been missing for the last couple of meetings. So, we usually pledge to that flag, and we had been pledging to this one. So, there was a little bit of confusion when the flag reappeared.
District 1 out again.
Okay, let's go to awards, presentations, and recognitions. And Paul Doole, our Assistant Wastewater Division Manager, will recognize...yeah, I'll do that afterwards since I forgot again. Let's go ahead and do that presentation. We'll come back. Just remind me about doing the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'd like to recognize Rob Hastings. From his birth at Fort Leavenworth to his dad's retirement in Colorado Springs, Rob followed the Army brat routine. He went through the public school system, is a self-described nerd slash prairie recluse with limited school friends and no dating capabilities. From an early age, Rob held various jobs, including newspaper carrier, trout hatchery hand, horse tender, and burger chef night manager. He was able to save some money for college and buy a $400 Corvair with big tires. Rob graduated with a BS degree in microbiology from Colorado State University at Fort Collins. After graduation, he decided to venture into the ornamental fish trade business. He raised tropical fish south of La Belle, Florida, where he had 86 fish ponds. He claims that he lived in a shack for a year with his dog, a spotted skunk he caught, and a chicken which was able to survive from being eaten. He definitely enjoyed the solitude that you earn when you live with a skunk. Rob then headed to Kerrville, Texas, to develop new products for a major aquarium food and pharmaceutical company. He got married there to Darlene and had two daughters, Cody and Amber. He was then transferred to Sanford, Florida, where he also oversaw the production line with quality control methods. In 1980, he decided to leave the fish trade and started working for Flowers Chemical Laboratory. He worked there for two years doing organic testing on anything from Ocala horsehairs to the space shuttle. On July 26, 1982, he became a laboratory technician with the City of Orlando at the Iron Bridge Regional Water Reclamation Facility. In 1987, he was promoted to laboratory manager at the Water Council 1 Water Reclamation Facility and actually started that lab up from scratch. In 1996, the city closed the Water Council 1 Laboratory and consolidated those lab operations to the Water Council 2 Water Reclamation Facility. In 2002, the city closed down the Water Council 2 Laboratory. I don't know if Rob had anything to do with all this, but... And consolidated all lab operations to the Iron Bridge Laboratory. The laboratory became independent of the water reclamation facilities in 2007 by becoming its own program and recertifying through the Florida Department of Health as the City of Orlando Environmental Laboratory Services. Rob currently oversees a staff of six analysts who perform services that are efficient and less expensive than similar services provided by outside laboratories. Rob and his staff not only support the operations of the wastewater division, but they also assist with other water quality projects throughout the city. And now that Rob's kids are grown, there's a little more room in the house, Rob would like to spend more time with some of his interests, including fly tying, old books, history, World War II airplanes, and the period navigation, charcoal drawing, wildlife photography, especially birds in flight, and maybe, once again, open ocean kayaking. Thanks, Rob, for 30 great years.
this morning, and what I wanted to do is have Ray Elwell update us on what the effect of Amendment 4 would be in the event it passes in November. So, Ray?
First, I have...just relax a little. I have four slides today, so I'm getting better on my slide allocations. The first slide we'll look at is really a summary of some information that's presented during the budget workshops, and that really is taking a look back at what happened as a result of Amendment 1 that was passed several years ago. And you can see in the far right-hand column, when we look at the impact of the first significant round of property tax reform, it's taken about $1 billion worth of taxable value off of our rolls for tax purposes. That equates to about $6 million of revenue. But what's also interesting to do is to look at where that tax relief has occurred. And you can see in the bottom of that particular slide that about 60% of that went to homestead properties, and about 40% of that went to commercial or non-homestead property. The primary driver of that is the 10% cap on non-homestead property, which we'll be talking about in Amendment 4. Amendment 4, there's really three major provisions. The first one dealing with homestead property. And if you recall, the way the current tax rules are set in place for homestead property is that the growth of the taxable value of homestead property is capped by 3% or the change in CPI, whichever is greater, regardless of whatever the property appraiser places a value on that home. What Amendment 4 would do is if the value of the home...so, if you have a homestead exemption on your home currently today, if the value of your property declines, then your taxable value will not change. In the past, if you still had some homestead value, some said exemption value available to you, your taxable value of your home would increase by whatever the 3% or the change in CPI. So, if you currently today have a home save our homes exemption on your property and your total value goes down, then your taxable value will not change even though you still have a home save our homes exemption, which is a slight change in the way of your calculations. And essentially, what's going to happen is we will never...your taxable value will never catch up with your total value of property unless that property comes all the way down to your tax value. So, your property today is taxed at less than what the full value is, and until your property value declines, you'll never recover that save our homes exemption. The second thing that Amendment 4 would do is for non-homesteaded property, as I mentioned earlier, there's a 10% currently, a 10% cap on a taxable value for non-homestead property. That cap would go from 10% to 5%. So, everything over 5% would essentially create a non-homestead save our homes exemption as we currently have today. And then finally, there is a first-time homebuyer's homestead exemption. First-time homebuyers is really a misnomer for that. It's for anyone who has not had a homestead property in the state of Florida in the previous three years. So, if you've previously had a homesteaded property, and over the last three years you didn't claim it, you are now entitled to this new exemption. And the way the new exemption works is that you'll have up to 50% of the just value of the home will be instantaneously created, created a save our homes type exemption on that property. And then over the next five years, that'll go away in 20% increments. There is a cap on the total amount of exemption that you can get, and that's 25...that's 50% of the total just value, median just value of homes in that particular county where the home is located. So, there is a cap on that credit. So, looking at the fiscal impact to the city, property taxes are our largest revenue source, about 28% of the budget. Looking back to where we are in our current fiscal year, our total taxable base only grew by .6%. Breaking that down between homestead and non-homestead, our homestead property declined by 1.5%, and our non-homestead property increased by 1%. I've been asked a lot, what is the fiscal impact to the city? And it's hard to predict because we don't know what the property values are going to do in the future. So, for this presentation, what I'd like to talk about is what is the impact on the city or for our purposes, for planning purposes, in the sense, what is the maximum revenue that we would achieve if Amendment 4 were to pass? So, if it were to pass, the maximum that our property value can grow for tax purposes is 4.7% because of the makeup, the difference between homestead property and non-homestead property. We're about 80/20, about 80% non-homestead, 20% homestead. That would equate to 4.8 million dollars. So, the maximum revenue that we can achieve year to year, assuming properties grow by over 5% for non-homestead and 3% for homestead, is 4.8 million dollars. And on our total budget, that's only about 1.3%. So, we've heard a lot about, well, the city should be able to live within 5% growth, 5% growth in revenue, but when you do the actual mathematics, that equates to about 1.3% of our budget. And just for reference purposes, if you take our built-in steps for police and fire, our pension increases and our health insurance increases, that 1.3% is automatically eaten up at that point just from regular cost increases.
Questions, thoughts? Commissioner Stewart?
Ray, back to your last point, and then I've got another question earlier. How is that increase today calculated compared to your first screen? 4.8%...4.8 million increase in property taxes. If it doesn't go to effect...
The $4.8 million or 4.7% is best-case scenario. This year, we're at .6%. Basically, our Avalorm revenue was flat year to year. But we're looking at it from a planning purposes. What is the best that we can expect? What happens above the cap is really irrelevant to us because it's not going to be revenue to the city. So, for forecasting purposes, the best that we can project next year, assuming that homestead properties grow higher than 5% and residential properties grow by more than 3% is 4.8 million dollars.
So, your suggestion is going to be that it's going to go someplace between .6 and 4.7?
It's going to be less than 4.7.
Seven, and probably more than what the previous year was, just from a standpoint...
We would certainly hope so, yes.
And then the other question I want...explain to me, using dollars and cents, what you said about the homestead exemption property and the limitation of the 3%.
Okay, homestead property...there's three values that are established on homestead property. There's the just value, which the property appraiser sets. There is an assessed value, which is a calculation based on the save our homes provision, that can only grow by 3% or the change in CPI. So, if the property is set here and you have a save our homes, your value for tax purposes is only going to grow by 3% or the change in CPI, whichever is less. So, if your just value, the higher value, goes down, your assessed value will not go up even though you've got that difference between the two numbers. So, in essence, you have been taxed all along at a value less than what the total value of your property is, but as long...if that value, that higher value, the just value, the actual value goes down, then your tax value is not going to change year to year. And in previous years, it would still grow so that those numbers would eventually meet.
Until they match. I mean, the original plan was it started...tax value and assessed value were all basically started off at the same...mathematically, they should have started off at about the same.
At the same point, right.
And then...
Then is the value of your property...
Value continued to go up, but the...
Your tax value just went up slightly.
Save our homes, let it go up artificially at 3%.
Correct. Or the change in CPI.
So, now, if I've got a house that's $150,000 in terms of assessed value, $100,000 at taxable value.
Correct.
Okay. And all of a sudden, I go from 150 to 145. I therefore now exempt the fact that I can't go from 100 to 103 the following year?
Correct. You'll stay at 100 because the value of your home went down.
Because the value went down, even though there's three...a third of my property, or I guess 50% of my property, still is in that kind of category.
Correct. And it could go down just a dollar, and your taxable value is going to stay the same.
Do you think it's going to create people who are going to now show up at the property appraisers and ask them for a revaluation of their house so it would drop in price?
I won't predict it, but it certainly incentivizes someone to change, to challenge the value of their property, if they're close enough to where they think they can get it so that it goes down.
Okay. If it's $1,000 more, they could argue that it should be $1,000 less on a half a million-dollar house, and all of a sudden, they would save a 3% increase in their taxes.
Correct. And the key point, this is not in the presentation, but whenever it goes down and sets that number, that's where we grow from. We never recover what we've lost because that value went down. And it's the same thing with the non-homesteaded property. Wherever we set the base is where we set the base, and we grow from there.
On the first-time homebuyer exemption, I've used dollars and cents and tried to explain that to me. So, I'm...I now haven't bought a house in three years. I can go get a first-time homebuyer homestead exemption.
Correct. And dollars and cents, rough numbers. If you buy a $100,000 home, you will automatically be given 50% of that value in a save our homes type exemption. And then each year, 20% of that'll go away until that exemption is completely gone. So, in that particular case, if it's a $100,000 home, you'll get 50% of that value in their first-time homebuyers program, and you'll get the standard $50,000 homestead exemption, and you'll, in a sense, won't pay taxes. So, this is additive to the existing exemptions that are in place today.
And so, the value then goes...the following year, at 50, it then goes to 60?
You'll then add $10,000 of taxable value to the rolls.
To the books. So, the following year, it would effectively be taxed on $10,000 of the value of the house?
Correct. And then you'll add $10,000 for each year until that credit is gone.
So, after I get to 50, after I get to the five years?
Then the first-time homebuyer's exemption will be gone.
So, then I'll be taxed at $100,000 plus five years of 3%?
No, no. It'll be taxed at the value less whatever other homestead exemptions you may have available, the $50,000 homestead exemption. So, it's a separate credit that's just calculated on a base dollar amount. So, you'll get that credit, whatever it is, the first year. You'll get a $50,000 credit, and then it'll go down to $40,000, $30,000, $20,000, $10,000, and then it'll just evaporate in the fifth year.
Any idea what the impact is besides us? I mean, what are you hearing from other cities, counties along the same lines?
It's hard to estimate what that impact is going to be on Amendment 4 in total. We've heard significant numbers. We've heard in the billion-dollar range of ultimately what this is going to cause cities and counties if it's passed.
From a math standpoint, as an accounting standpoint, if we end up going at about a 1.3% increase, where do we make up the difference for budgeting purposes for our current staff? Do you make it up in terms of cutting staff until you get to a point where you budget?
Commissioner, honestly, there's only two ways to go, and that is to raise the millage rate on existing properties, or it's to cut services. When you look at the rest of our revenue sources, we don't control sales tax. Essentially, we don't control franchise fees. A lot of the revenues we have, we don't control. Property taxes is our largest revenue source that is, you know, given to us to control, which is getting harder to do with all the restrictions that are being placed upon us. So, my candid answer to you, we have one or two choices, raising taxes or eliminating...
Cutting services.
Cutting services.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So, the conundrum for a lot of local governments will be, let's assume you want to maintain the same amount of tax revenue or increase it by a little bit. It means you're...since you're reducing the amount, the commercial properties or non-homestead can increase, it means you would do an across-the-board rate increase, which would affect the homesteaded residential.
When much of the...I don't know. Can you tell us what...give me an estimate about what the growth we have in terms of our property value of residential is for homebuyers who are buying houses? I mean, what happens is that the value goes into the new sale price. So...
Correct.
$100,000 house, I sell for $200,000. The new taxable value is $200,000. Now, if I sell it to a new homebuyer, he ends up with a significant amount of savings.
And my answer to that...I don't know the exact number, but my answer to you is a significant portion of our save our homes exemption has gotten wiped off the books because of the decreasing of property values. So, that is not a...that's not going to be a significant number. From our perspective, look, you know, forward-looking, the significant number's going to be on the commercial side. And whenever I'm asked that question, I always say, "Well, remember back when we did the first round of property tax reform? All the issues that precipitated the state legislature to act are now going to be applying to the non-homesteaded property as well. Business transfers, where there's going to be a penalty because there is a built-up non-homestead exemption, that's now going to go back on the books to a company that may be acquiring a new company, or a competitive advantage, disadvantage of a new company starting at the current rate when you've got a competitor that's going to be at a lower tax rate because they may have been in business longer." So, there's a number of other factors that are going on that are going to...in our future looking, we're going to be back at the table again because we're creating inequities within the system that are going to have to be addressed.
Which is the greatest thing in the whole world. Mayor, thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership with the Sentinel and my word. I really appreciate the opportunities to kind of get the message out about what the impact is to our citizens if this occurs. I mean, it's just one of those occasions where we just...I was sharing earlier, we've built a state entirely on growth. So, when growth stops, and then you start tinkering with it, I mean, the general market will help correct itself, but then you start tinkering with the market, all of a sudden now, every variable you possibly have is out of whack. You can't ever get back in whack again. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Let's move into the mayor's update. This last Saturday was eventful. I had the opportunity to drop the puck at the first home hockey game of our Orlando Solar Bears out of hibernation. Solar Bears revived their name from the original hockey team that we had, and it was a great game. They beat the Florida Everblades in overtime, and we will have a full slate of home games. I think there's 36 home games. Does that sound right?
Minutes.
What?
Minutes.
Okay, Commissioner. These guys are very excited about the minutes. All right. Let's move back. Go back, and we will take up the...we will consider the minutes from the workshop, the agenda review, and city council meetings...
Move approval.
From October 1st. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Continuing on with the mayor's update, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Sheehan to report on dragon boat racing from Saturday.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It was my pleasure to participate, and we had three great teams at Walgreens-sponsored Atlanta International Dragon Boat Festival, which was Saturday at Walt Disney World's Downtown Disney. We had three city teams, and we had the Dueling Dragons, the Magic Dragons 2, and the Magic Dragons 1. I was a member of the Magic Dragons 1, which was kind of known as a bad news boat. We weren't expected to do anything, and I have something really great to...because we had the stud boat and the dud boat, but we did really good. So, I'm going to tell you...I'm going to tell you how we did. The Magic Dragons 2, Division B, Captain Shannon hats the stud boat, won the Asia Trend Public Service Cup with a time of 2:38:37. We came in 11 seconds behind them in the dud boat. Magic Dragons 2 came in first in the semi...in the Division B semifinal race with a time of 2:32:60, but then in the grand final race, their 2:31:25 was not quite fast enough, and they came in third place behind the city's own OPD Dueling Dragons, who had a race time of 2:30:30. The Dueling Dragons came in second place behind Landry's Select Club. OPD's Dueling Dragons were awarded the Inspiration Award for the unique and remarkable relationships that were developed between this group of at-risk kids from Paramore Kids Zone and OPD SWAT. And this is the cup that the stud boat won. And they also won... Two medals, which they want to present to you, because you actually rode in the stud boat. All righty?
Yeah.
There you go.
The mayor rode the stud boat?
Yes.
Of course. Was my microphone on? I'm sorry.
And now for the dud boat. Magic Dragons 1, Division C, Captain Judy Hayes in our bad news boat. We came in, of course, last in the Public Service Cup race, but we regrouped and won the next race, the semifinal Division C, with a time of 2:44:26. Moving ahead to the grand final race in Division C, we came in as the winner... ...of Division C with a winning time of 2:38:10. Our city teams, friends, and relatives raised $30,500 this year, which was donated to the women playing for time in MD Anderson. So, you also get a dud medal, too, Mayor. Here we go.
All right. He's a dud-arsed dud.
Here you go. And I'd just like to say that I did motivate the dud team with beer. Tom Connery, I took your beer. I owe you a case of beer because we all drank...I didn't bring any. I just...I just, you know, promised it. So, I owe you beer. Thank you so much, y'all. And I have to tell you, a lot of people talk about, you know, city employees, and they don't understand how hard you all work and how hard you work in the community and what you do for this community. So, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's been a pleasure and an honor to row with you.
(Applause)
Come on down. Let's take a picture.
And Commissioner, I think the appropriate term is paddle versus row. But would everybody that participated come up front? Let's do a picture.
Spoken like a real stud. Spoken like a real stud.
You didn't invite me? You didn't invite me? What a group! Just to see... No. Just don't know if we're going to do it or not. (Applause)
So, that was the third year that...
So, that was the third year that we have done dragon boating, and Rebecca and her team had that up. And each year, we've, I think, by far raised the most money for the event, and we've brought home hardware each of the three years, so it's always a good time. And I would encourage those city employees that haven't participated, and any other city commissioners that would like to do that, although you guys might be in the dud boat. Certainly, I know all would be welcome to participate. Okay, just a couple items I want to mention on the agenda is a lease agreement relocating the District Two OPD Satellite Office, which provides not only a place for our police officers to secure a presence in the neighborhood on Commissioner Ortiz's district, but also is the home to the first Seniors vs. Crime Project Office in Orlando, and that was something that Commissioner Ortiz spearheaded, so I want to thank him for his hard work and dedication in making that partnership with the Attorney General's Seniors vs. Crime Project possible. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
And then Creative Village Grants. We have made good use of federal funding at the Creative Village. You recall that we will be shortly underway with our Tiger II grant, which is allowing us to make some of the infrastructure improvements to accommodate a new BRT on that side of I-4. And we recently received, or actually, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council received a $2.4 million grant to develop sustainable implementation plans around Sunrail stations, and today, we are authorizing the city to receive our portion of that grant. And back in June, we received an EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant of 400,000 to assess the potential contamination on the site, and today, we are applying for an EPA Brownfield Cleanup Grant in the event it is necessary to do any cleanup there. And then, a couple more things. I want to commend OPD Chief again for their outstanding work in the area of DUI enforcement. They were recognized by the Mothers Against Drunk Driving with three awards, including the Top Agency DUI Officer, which was Bobby Shellhorn, the Outstanding Dedication to Sobriety Checkpoints, and the Outstanding Dedication to Saturation Patrols. And FDOT has awarded OPD a grant to fund a DUI enforcement team. So, Chief, keep up the good work in that regard. And then, Commissioner Ortiz, I'm going to defer to you to talk about George DeSalvio Way, and if you want to go ahead and do that now, it would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We had, and this is an initiative that started with the Orlando Police Department, so once again, we want to thank the Chief and the team, Captain Mina and some other officers that have been involved. The sad part of this is we lost a great, great officer, George DeSalvia, years ago during an incident. It was, it started all as a traffic stop in John Young, and ended up by losing Officer DeSalvia and having Officer Diaz also hurt in the incident. Well, the officers, for the longest time, they've been trying to find a place where we, they can commemorate the name of George DeSalvia, and we finally, finally, by the grace of God and by the help of everybody working together, we found this location, which is, it goes in tune with other areas where we train our officers. We have this segment that we're picking to name it, George DeSalvia Way, is right in front of the Training Center and nearby the Communication Center on Andes. So, we're really looking forward to this great event. I believe we're going to be doing the actual event on the 21st of November? Yes, sir. 21st, so those of you that are interested in coming by and sharing with us what we consider a great moment commemorating a great officer, you are all welcome. It gives me great pride that, you know, I've served with the force, and at the time when we lost DeSalvia, I was serving, I remember that terrible morning when we had the incident, and it brings us great pride to do this. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted on through a single vote of council. We give each member of the council an opportunity to comment on items from the consent agenda as well as to update you on items of importance or events of importance from their districts. We rotate who, the order in which we participate, and today, we're beginning with District One. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I have on the consent agenda is an Item F under Housing. Would like to congratulate and thank Byron, Deb, Kevin, and their team for overseeing that. Some very important opportunities for us to help in the housing area for our citizens, and as I look in that and learn more about that, it's quite a job to match the requirements of each specific grant with the recipients, and they are doing a great job with our housing folks. So, just wanted to thank them on that, and there's several items under F concerning that. Specific to District One, again, we try to put most things on the website, but a couple of things I've mentioned, on October 3rd, attended the Hispanic Achievement Business and Leadership Awards across the street. It was a luncheon, and it was the, one of several ways that the Hispanic community's trying to recognize their leaders and their achievers, and I was grateful to be included in that. Also, October 4th, we finally did the ribbon-cutting for Nemours. It may have been the hottest day of the summer, I don't know. Fortunately, I was in the shade, the mayor unfortunately was in the bright sun, but it was a great event, but Nemours is now officially open. I think today is the first day they start actually seeing patients, so certainly exciting time for the area. And then, finally, out there, Saturday night, a partnership between UCF Medical School and the local YMCA, a fundraiser, but we had a Jazz on the Green Festival, and it was really well-attended. We had the food trucks in full force, probably 2,000 to 3,000 people, but for the first year, it was, it was a great event. So, I'd encourage you, next year, when you see that, to maybe put that on your calendar if it works. It was, it was a great event. Upcoming this week, two items I've mentioned, starting tomorrow, we heard a little bit about this morning at the workshop, but the Tavistock Group, in conjunction with the folks in Medical City, are doing a two-day forum slash symposium to try to attract and continue the momentum and the awareness of what's going on in Medical City. And so, they've got plus or minus 150 people coming in from around the country, and these are CEOs of companies like Cisco and Johnson &amp; Johnson, the Harvard Business, excuse me, Harvard Medical School will be there, GE Healthcare, but kind of the who's who in academia, as well as in business, as well as in healthcare, to continue to work with some, a term we use a lot up here, partnership, to try to continue the momentum out there at Medical City. So, I share that with you because, A, it'll be a great opportunity for Orlando to get some great exposure here in town, and, two, if you happen to be driving in the area and somebody pulls in front of you, for the next couple of days, let's just wave, okay? Let's not, let's not make our guests feel that they're not welcome. And then, finally, Thursday is the EDC Barbecue, big fundraising event for EDC. If you have time, I'd encourage you to go out, buy a ticket, enjoy the festivities so we can support their efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start also by congratulating once again the Tavistock Group and Lake Nona for the presentation this morning. Wonderful presentation. Couple of travels I've done, I'm always, I brag about that section of our city, well, the city as a whole, but when they were talking about clusters, they were running the money. Would they have been able to attain great results and great accomplishments? So, we're very proud of them. On the 5th of this past month, or actually of October, I participated in this Years-Afterschool All-Stars Golf Tournament, and even though we weren't able to finish a game because I saw it raining like, well, a lot, we had a great time, it was a great collaboration. These guys put a great, great tournament. I believe they, they did, were able to raise a substantial amount of money. I want to congratulate Mr. Tyler Chandler, Ray Crump, Greg Hahn, and everyone else involved in the planning of this event. I know this money is put to really good use with our kids in our communities all over the city, and we can see the changes and the motivation on our kids. So, once again, congratulations. Our introductory meeting with the new section of District Two businesses, businesses towards the beach line, the southern part of Seminole, was a, took place at the Marriott Hotel. On October 9th was a total, total success. I was very pleased. Mayor, you came over, thank you so much. Everybody was very happy. I want to congratulate and thank Mr. Chris Donahue, General Manager for the Airport Marriott Hotel, for allowing us to have the meeting at his location. I also want to thank our city directors and staff that attended the meeting. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Andrew Cole, Program Coordinator of the Seminole Business Partnership, for doing a great presentation. This group is really moving forward, and we have a clear vision plan stated, and we're going to keep expanding, and now that we have more collaborators, I think the sky's going to be the limit. Hopefully, we will change once and for all that entrance, which is not only the main gate to the city, it is to the region, and after having 55 million visitors in the city of Orlando, ladies and gentlemen, this is the main gate to the whole state of Florida. So, let's show off. Earlier this month, I welcomed a National Society of Hispanic MBAs Convention to Orlando. More than 5,000 people attended this year, the convention. It was very impressive. I want to thank the staff for giving me the opportunity to do that. It was, it was a great honor. Last week, the grand opening of the Consulate of Colombia office took place at Lake Yola. I wish Consul Maria Matilde Londoño and her staff good luck and much success with their new office. A great amount of people from Colombia attended this event, very proud, and I thought it was, it was good because there's great initiatives going on among the different, all the communities and collaborating with each other and learning about each other, and that's what this is all about. Orlando has become not only the number-one destination in the world, but is a great melting pot, so it's good to have these leaders coming over and celebrating their events at our Lake Yola. Recently, a long-term resident and leader of our Englewood Park community passed away, Mrs. Betty Casser. Ms. Betty Casser was not only a friend, she was family. It was one of those ladies that, she always had a smile, she never had a negative comment to say about anybody, she always looked at life and with a positive attitude, and is a great loss to our community. So, to the friends and family, I just want to go ahead and give them my very sincere condolences, and she will definitely be missed. I attended, as the mayor said before, I attended the Solar Bears game. That was, that was a lot of fun, Mayor. That was a lot, the end, it became really, really nerve-wracking. I've never been to a hockey game like that, so I really enjoyed it, and it was, it was packed, too. So, very proud, very proud of what they're doing, and it was a great start. We won the first game. On the consent agenda, as the mayor mentioned, B11, Seniors vs. Crime and OPD Satellite Office, very proud to have the office now at the Seminole Plaza. We are about, hopefully, we'll be opening within the next month or so, and it's going to be a much bigger office and well-centralized. So, I'm looking forward to these two offices working together. NSP3, as Commissioner Gray was mentioning, the expansion going, we have expanded further east to include Englewood within the NSP3. I want to thank Deborah Girall, she's done a great job. There she is. Thank you so much and your staff. You guys have worked tremendously on this, and we're looking forward to help some other families. And as we mentioned before, the Item I1 and Second Read here in ordinance is George DeSalvia Way. As I said before, we're really looking forward to this event. Hopefully, we'll have the family and friends over there to honor this great officer. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Had a busy October. I think that we find out that everything that happens in the city happens either March or October, and it just kind of goes solid through those months. A couple of things happened I want to share with you. This past weekend was the College Park Jazz Fest. We had thousands of people show up, had three stages going on simultaneously up and down Edgewater Drive. What a great response. They've raised thousands of dollars that will help support the College Park Partnership and also help support some very important charities. One of the things we also did this year, the College Park Partnership did, was they began to coordinate with the Pink Army of Florida Hospital, and they began to help raise some money with them through their Pink October Initiative, Breast Cancer Awareness. So, real excited about that. Thank you to Andrea and the work that she has done. Saturday night, I had the opportunity to celebrate the 20th anniversary of Orlando Philharmonic and the 10th anniversary of the Orlando Repertory Theater with a star-spangled birthday concert at Lock Haven. It was a great opportunity to get out there and just enjoy some great patriotic music. It was designed to do a couple of things, but one is, in a very contentious election time, there's a chance for us as Americans to come together and just enjoy it, and it was a wonderful opportunity to do that. They asked me to do some narration, I was honored to do that, and David and Gene just did a great job, and I appreciate their work. This past Saturday, Commissioner Sheen and I had the opportunity to judge the kids at the Pumpkins and Pies Festival over at the Manello, raising money for the American Folk Festival. We, we came to agreement very quickly, I think.
Actually, great, it was good.
It was good. We had, the cutest was this little 14-month-old cow, which was cute, and then we had, we decided together that we were going to give away a contest for the most original people who didn't have to buy it, they had to go make it. And so, we found a kid who actually made a Roman Legionnaires suit, and it was just really fascinating, it was great. So, it was wonderful to be out there and appreciate Commissioner Sheen being there as well. On a sad note, I know that Commissioner Sheen will mention as well, Earl K. Wood's passing has happened since our last meeting, and we had the opportunity to go and be there for the funeral. Earl's just a wonderful, wonderful man, just a gracious man and very dear friend of our family forever. In fact, I can remember one short story is that when my dad died in 1976 at the age of 70, and Earl had been in office for probably eight years, maybe 12 years, and Earl was 56 at the time, and my dad called him the young Whipper Stapper at 56. So, they were good friends, and a day didn't go by when I didn't see Earl, and he didn't mention my father and how close they were as friends. Also, we mourn the passing of Stephen Gaitas, one of our dear friends in our district. Stephen has succumbed to cancer, and Officer Long is now in similar treatment as Stephen and has seen some wonderful success. So, Stephen lived over in Rowena Park, just a really, really neat family, just a really neat guy, so I just want to share that, our condolences go out to them. Of course, Solar Bears are welcome. One of the things I want to also share is that I had the opportunity to host the Where the Fun Starts Parks and Recreation Golf Tournament. We did a great, it was a great opportunity. I think we raised several thousand dollars, I want to say 30 or 40, but it was for the Parks and Recreation and Orlando Youth Trust. It was really neat, wonderful turnout, a great day, a great venue over at Dubstred, and it was a good chance to host them. And then, the last thing, which is probably the most important thing I can say today, is that I've been looking all day, just looking for the gauntlet I can throw down between me and Commissioner Gray. This Saturday, Lee Middle School Girls Soccer Team will take on the Lake Nona Middle School Soccer Team for the countywide championship. Now, I don't think it's countywide, I think it's just citywide, because I think that's probably more important. So, I'm looking for the gauntlet to throw down, so somewhere along the line, it's going to either cost you or me a meal, Jim, somewhere in that process. So, we're excited about these two great middle schools in our city playing for the county championship between our two districts. Some fun at Lou Gardens coming up. October 26th is the Ghost Stories Lou Gardens. February, I mean, I'm sorry, November 2nd is a date night with the movie, the classic Rear Window, and of course, you can go to Lou Gardens to check that out. College Park Oral History Project of the Orange County History Museum has started a history swap, an oral history swap, which is kind of a neat thing. They've asked the Stewart family to come in and to speak on College Park Before Disney, which is kind of a nice little thing for us to share. We're going to do that on November 26th. Next Monday, Joan Raffier, Billy Dyle's daughter, and Joan Milligan will be sharing about the history of College Park and some of the things that they have seen, and that'll be next Monday at the Infusion Tea on October 29th. On the agenda, I just want to mention one thing that hasn't been mentioned already, and that was the reimbursement agreement from Florida Hospital for the Sunrail station. It's their commitment to Sunrail, and we get a chance to build it, they get a chance to help pay for it. Really thrilled about how that's moving forward. If you had a chance to go look over there, it's really neat to see that thing begin to move, and now we now have a chance to anticipate when this is actually going to all happen, so it's really kind of great. Mayor, as always, thank you for your leadership on that. And then, of course, the HUD funding agreement. And then, of course, the HUD funding agreements coming forward. I want to thank Deborah Girard for your leadership. Thank you, Deborah. We've seen some really neat things coming forward and seen some good, strong support behind it in terms of policy. So, thank you very much for, for your leadership as that's concerned. And last but not least, it's Halloween coming up. So, check out my webpage for some Halloween safety tips. But y'all be safe out there, as they say on the old Hill Street Blues.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 4, Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor. And on the Dragon Boats, I just want to say, doing one more shout-out to my shero Rebecca Sutton for inspiring us all to do this. And a lot of people don't know, but they all bugged me to get a mammogram last year, and I had an inconsistency, and I didn't find out I was okay until June. So, it's very, very important. This whole month is about getting checked. And I got checked, and I had a little something, something, didn't talk about it because I was in the middle of election, and you don't want anybody to use that against you. But, you know, it's very, very important, y'all, to get checked. So, I did. And, you know, y'all need to as well. We had something kind of fun happen at Lake Davis Greenwood over the last couple of weeks. We opened the first dog-friendly park. That's what the parks people say I have to call it, since it's on leash, sponsored by Canyon Creek Ranch. Ed, you have the video to run. This has been running on their website, and they did this, they produced this here locally, and it was a lot of fun, and we had a lot of volunteers from Parks and Canyon Creek Ranch and PetSmart out there helping us do this. So, could you run that, Ed? All right, we're ready. Thank you.
That's a good boy. Yeah. That's a good boy. Yeah. Ryder is my best little buddy, and he's my right-hand man. He is always by my side, and I couldn't ask for a better dog. We enjoy playing together, but we kind of stick to the backyard and stick around the house. We don't really have a place to go here in Orlando, something that we would really, really enjoy together. We've heard that there's a park nearby that's recently been renovated to add some dog-friendly features, and we can't wait to go check it out. Now that I know that this park is here, I am just so excited to make it our go-to hangout. Having an area like this that I can go with Ryder, that I can bring him to and just spend some time and play, it just enriches our bond, and it just makes me so happy to see him happy. His name is Ryder.
Hi Ryder.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Cara.
Sean Bullen, nice to meet you. This is all part of our Canyon Creek Ranch Better Way project. We're all about searching for a better way for pets, not only in the food that we produce, but also the differences that we can make in the community through different projects like this.
Here in Florida, we have great weather 12 months out of the year. The city of Orlando, we're just so proud of our city, but, you know, we really didn't have a place for people to bring their dogs.
We found this beautiful park, but it was really lacking pet-specific areas. So, we worked with a local contractor and came up with some ideas that could liven up the park and bring some activities that pet owners and their pets could enjoy together.
We have a dog wash station. We have an agility training area. We're going to have beautifully painted benches. And again, I want to thank Canyon Creek Ranch for their wonderful sponsorship because without them, this would have never happened.
One of the things that, you know, Petco and the Petco Foundation always encourage is to help others. And we're helping humans and animals get along together with a park like this.
Ryder and I, we had an amazing time. We've been hanging out here for a little bit, just resting and just enjoying the park. Cannot wait to bring my friends back and show them this beautiful addition to the park. I think he's going to be begging me to come back here every day.
Thank you for indulging me in that, but I thought that was a great video and really just putting Orlando in a great, you know, online era, and they did a great job in producing that. So, I want to thank again Canyon Creek Ranch and Petco. I also would like to acknowledge the passing of Earl K. Wood. He was a tax collector, Colonial Town resident for over 50 years, a great public servant. And I will never forget, when I used to work for the state, I used to go to McDonald's in the morning. I'm a lot healthier now, and I'd always see Mary and Earl making out in the parking lot. And they were married for 63 years, so it's always important to keep the love going. How that man lived to be 96-years-old when he ate at McDonald's every morning is beyond me. But, you know, we certainly will miss him and, you know, acknowledge his long years of service. On the agenda today, on item B13, delighted to see the holiday decorations coming back to the city of Orlando. A lot of people have mentioned the HUD Sustainability Grant. I'm actually the Vice Chair of the Eastern Florida Regional Planning Council. We've been working on that for a long time. And something that I'm really concerned about Amendment 4 happening is that in order to get these grants, these municipalities have to match the money with 10%. And a lot of the smaller municipalities are having a difficulty even making that match now. Imagine if they get cut, especially the smaller municipalities even more, they wouldn't have been able to make that match. So, I think it's very important that people think before they vote because we're actually bringing in federal dollars to help with this redevelopment, and we might not be able to do that with these smaller cities. On number I10, the Proton, pondering Orlando Health. We're very happy to see that moving forward. A lot of great things happening at Orlando Health with the new Proton facility. And Commissioner Stewart has been talking a lot of smack to Commissioner Gray. That's only because Edgewater has not beaten Boone at football, and I'm throwing down the gauntlet on him, and I'm going to win. So, I'm just saying, he's got to pick on someone, Commissioner Gray. So, I guess you're it. Alrighty, so, hey, it's all good. It's all good. We're bringing it on. So, anyway, that's all I have, Mayor, and thank you so much for letting me participate in Dragon Boat because it was just an absolute joy.
All right. So, we'll move on to District 6, Commissioner Aings.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I'd like to acknowledge the home-going of Monica Spires. Monica Spires is the wife of Officer Zachary Spires. Sentinel did a great article on her in the newspaper. Monica was 35-years-old. Two weeks prior to her demise, she delivered two twins, a set of twins, two girls, to Zach. And Zach now has to raise the daughters. And he has a lot of support from his family within and around, and specifically with the OPD community as well. They did a bake sale for Zach and the kids to help them along. And, but Monica, as Zach spoke during the funeral, as a husband, was a very lively person and an energetic person, and he's definitely missing her right now. But he also has an older daughter that's 21 and a son that's 11. But we're so sad to see Monica go after she delivered the babies, just two weeks after she delivered the babies. And then also, Orlando is missing an icon in Andrea "Billy" Love, who was a radio DJ on WOKB Radio. And this was back in the 80s and 90s, and also she was on WORL. And those urban stations meant a lot to a lot of us as we were coming up. And specifically, Billy worked with Jack the Rapper, Jack Gibson. Jack has since passed away as well, but Billy passed away. And they had a office, Jack the Rapper Office, that was on Edgewater Drive. There, Commissioner Stewart, for several years, I think they closed in about the year 2000. But Billy Love is certainly going to be missed in our Orlando community. And then for the agenda, I'd like to say item, let me look back. Item F5, this is in regards to the home deferred loan between the city of Orlando and the Village of Orlando, as well as a new partner that's being seen here in Orlando, and that's the Clear Lake Community. Bishop Wiggins and Pastor David Youth with First Baptist Church have joined together, and they're going to provide housing, I think 23 units being rehabbed. And for the affordable homes along Clear Lake, I think that's going to be a great opportunity for some people. And I know you guys can't really wait to get started even more. You've done a lot of preliminary work, too. But I'm ready to see it open up, and so we wish you well on that, and congratulations very much. And then also, item I7, the Florida Department of Transportation Local Agency Program, or LAP program, for the construction of congestion management improvements along International Drive. And that's specifically the North I Drive area. So, that's so vastly needed within that particular area. And on October the 15th, I was at Richmond Heights Elementary School along with Principal Sherry Thompson, OPD Neighborhood Watch Person Kia Chafré, and my police liaison Officer Tia Pruitt. We were there at Richmond Heights to celebrate with the kids the 2012 Kids Night Out. And this is a party that I have for the kids in lieu of the Halloween going out, that we really bring the kids together, and about 70 kids were there after school at Richmond Heights. Great event. They had pizza and lots of candy in their little bags to take home with them. So, they were very happy, and I was really surprised at the kind of support that we had from the school system. They really worked with Kia and Tia very closely on this particular project. And also coming out is a film, and the movie is entitled "A Measure of Faith." You got to go see it. This is a great movie. Dallas Davis, who is an Orlando resident, really produced and put this movie together. Pat Williams of The Magic, he stars in this movie, Yours Truly. I'm in that movie as a local politician, is dedicating the computer lab at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. Of course, he did have his little red tie on as well. So, it's a great movie, and it has a huge message in it. And it's called "A Measure of Faith," and it's in many of the theaters here locally. The West Oaks, Altamont Mall, AMC, AMC Downtown Disney, Amstar Lake Mary, Cinemark there at Festival Bay, so that's right in the district, Regal Waterford Lakes, Regal Wynn Park Village Stadium, Regal Ovita Mall, Regal Point Orlando Stadium. So, please go out and take a look at this movie and enjoy it. Many of the scenes, too, were shot right here in Orlando, even in some of the Orlando neighborhoods. So, it really says a lot for, for our community. And then also, yesterday, 9:10, Church of God celebrated their 90th church anniversary yesterday. Bishop Thomas Chanot is the pastor, and Bishop Kevin Cabarrus is the co-pastor. At the Sunday morning service, which is a great event, the church was packed, standing room only in there. They've done a lot of improvements to the church property itself. Orange County Commissioner Tiffany Moore-Russell was on hand to attend the services. And Orange County Public Schools Superintendent Barbara Jenkins and her husband were also on hand, and they obviously had a great time, lots of support from the church community as well as the community. And they're looking to do a lot of improvements, Mayor, in the Paramore area. So, they've got their eyes set on some targets, and I think they're getting a little cue from Bishop Wiggins, which is great. Keep it up. And they're going to be doing some great things in the community as well. Then also, this Friday, October 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., I'm hosting the District 6 Community Job Fair. So, we need lots of people to come out. Vendors are still welcome to come and partake. I think we have about 15 different vendors now. And thanks to the Police Department, the Fire Department for being there. Rural Metro is going to be there, Bright House, WOFL, Fox 35, Orlando Food Service Partners, AM Scott. So, we've got a lot of people that's going to, going to be there, different business communities are going to be there. So, we're urging all of those that are unemployed to come on out and those that want to improve upon their employment opportunities to come out as well. And remember, Friday, October 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, and that's 1723 Bruton Boulevard in Orlando, Florida. And finally, I have the Red Tie Fall Basketball League, and that's being held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. And this basketball league featured several different high schools and their coaches and players. And this was an opportunity for the high schools to play basketball in a preseason fashion. And this was some serious basketball playing. I mean, it was down to the wire. This past Saturday, they had the Final Four. And what come out of that was the University High School Cougars, which is led by head coach Billy Owens. He's going to be up against head coach Anthony Long and the Dr. Phillips Panthers. First Academy was hanging in there, guys. They really were, and they participated. And some great ball players, and I know they really enjoy it being there at the Smith Center. Mark Price even come out to watch his son play and participate. Mark used to play with the, with the, who is it? Was it The Magic? No, he worked for The Magic. Cavaliers, Cavaliers. That's it. He played with the Cavaliers. And he also worked for The Magic in The Magic's office recently. So, that was the test, guys, and y'all passed the test. Thank you so very much. But this is going to be a great event on tonight. The playoff starts at 7:00 p.m. That's the championship game. We've got some wonderful trophies that we will be giving away, some red tie trophies, and some ribbons to the players as well that won. Evans High School Coach Chucky Atkins was there on hand, and we had Osceola. Coach Nathaniel Alexander was involved. Olympia was involved, Coach Tony Atkins. And Palm Coast, we had high school from Palm Coast to come, Coach Gary McDaniel. And then, of course, Oak Ridge was involved, too, with Coach Alex Jackson. So, all of those other teams were involved. Now, we're down to the final two, and we're going to have our champions tonight. So, come on out and be involved and see how well the community enjoys this, too, because they really do. I mean, it's, 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 it's a lot of energy, and it's great for our community, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
So moved. Let's move on. Motion on the consent agenda, motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. That means all of your stuff just passed. Okay, let's recess without objection the City Council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. We have one item which is simply approving the meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Sheen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aings. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, so we will adjourn the CRA meeting. We will reconvene the City Council meeting. We're on hearings ordinance, second read, number one, Madam Flotter.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida amending Chapter 56, Orlando City Code, Transportation Impact Fee by amending various sections from Section 56.01 through Section 56.23 by providing for clarification of terms as well as establishing new transportation impact fee rates that incorporate multimodal factors, establishing new methodology for alternative impact fee calculations, exempting transit-oriented developments, extending the change-of-use exemption and installment payment of impact fees, revising Exhibit A, Transportation Impact Fee Rate Schedule, and Exhibit B, Transportation Benefit Areas, and adding a new Exhibit C to show areas of transit-oriented development, providing severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and actions, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Show move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to a street name change, renaming Bellevue Avenue generally located between Kaylee Street and 147 feet north of Pennsylvania Street to Cool Avenue, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Show move.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to a street name change, renaming a segment of Andy's Avenue generally located west of the northernly extension of Andy's Avenue, north of Lake Underhill Drive and State Road 408 East-West Expressway to George DeSalvia Way, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Show move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, I think I heard Commissioner Ings at the second on that.
Yeah, I think that's a good one.
Okay, but second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending and restating the planned development zoning district regulations for certain real property generally located north of Virginia Drive, south of East Princeton Street, east of Haven Drive, and west of North Mills Avenue, and comprised of 14.22 acres more or less, amending and restating the planned development district's development program, site plan, boundaries, and conditions of development, directing amendment of the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Show move. Commissioner Stewart, that's yours.
Show move.
Second.
I am so sorry, you know, please forgive me.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, ordinances first read, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida repealing Chapter 7 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Purchasing Code, and is in its entirety and adopting a new Chapter 7 entitled Procurement Code to provide rules and regulations regarding the procurement of goods and services, including construction and professional services by the city, providing for severability, providing for codification and correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date.
Show move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, you'll recall that Ray gave us a good overview on this item at workshop last council day. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting SP Recycling Southeast LLC a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees duties, and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Show move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida changing the zoning classifications from R1TPH to IGTPH on certain real property generally located north of West Jackson Street, southwest Church Street, east of Clear Lake Way, and west of southwest Moreland Drive, and addressed as 1016 West Church Street comprised of .3 acres more or less, amending the city's official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Show move.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for tuning in.